October twenty one, twenty twenty, our call to order concurrently at six oh three. Pursuant to executive order N dash twenty five dash twenty and N dash twenty nine dash twenty, members of the planning commission and staff are participating in this meeting via video link, Zoom and or teleconference. This is not an in-person meeting. Members of the public may observe this meeting on the city of Hawthorne website or on YouTube. We'll now have the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Ryan Richard, could I ask you to lead the pledge of allegiance for us, please?
No problem. Let's see if we all stand, put your right hand over your heart. I don't know if you all have flags to look at, but. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. To the republic, with its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Commissioner Richard.
No problem.
We're having the roll call.
Chairperson Smith?
Yes, present.
Vice Chairperson Alshanabla?
Present.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Present.
Commissioner Caraveo?
Present.
Commissioner Richard?
Present. Oral communications. This is the time for oral communications. Because this meeting is not an in-person meeting, members of the public who wish to participate in the meeting were asked to participate by calling or emailing the planning department no later than five thirty P M. today, noting the item on which the member wants to speak. This information was provided on the agenda posted in compliance with the Brown Act on Friday, October sixteen, twenty twenty. At this time, if there were any messages left for oral communication, staff will either read messages on behalf of those individuals who wish to provide written comments for oral communications or invite members of the public who wish to provide oral comments to speak through the Zoom application. Remarks, whether written or oral, are still limited to three months, three minutes in duration. Staff, is there any participation from the public for oral communications?
I have not received any requests for oral communications.
Thank you. We'll move on. Planning Commission and Airport Zoning Commission Consent Calendar. There are no items. We'll recess the Airport Zoning Commission and add the Planning Commission Consent Calendar. There are no items. Continued Public Hearings. There are no items. New Public Hearing. Besting Tentative Parcel Map Number Twenty Twenty P M. Zero One, Four Lots Into Two Lots. Now is the time and place to open the public hearing to consider besting tentative parcel map number Twenty Twenty P M. Zero One. Senior Planner Chris Palmer will present the staff report. Mr. Palmer?
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. Let me know if everyone can see it.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, um, this is a subdivision of, uh, the staff reports have four parcels, but it's five parcels. There's a parcel on your screen. It's a little sliver towards the top of the screen that wasn't included, but it's part of it. And it's actually a part of the parcel map as well, but it's five lots into four lots to support the development of a one hundred unit apartment building with a affordable com- uh, with affordable component and commercial component. So upon approval of the map, what will happen is that this portion of the lot will become apartments. And this bottom portion will become commercial. So it'll be a two-lot subdivision. So it will combine the existing five lots. This project is, should have come to you before when the other two parts were approved. The first part was a design review. The other part was a density bonus housing agreement. This is part of a project that was, um, approved it back in two thousand sixteen, and it was changed from condos to apartments. So this is the final piece that will, uh, permit this project to move forward. So once approved, they would have two lots. One lot would have the housing component, a hundred unit apartment, and the other lot would have the eighteen hundred plus square foot commercial development. This concludes my report. Staff is recommending approval. It's categorically exempt from CEQA, and we are available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Palmer. Does the planning commission have any questions for staff? This is the time for questions of staff only. Commissioners, anything?
Yeah, first, one question. Mr. Palmer, if you wouldn't mind sharing your screen back, I just wanted to get a clarification on the, uh, on the parcel one more time. Okay, just so I see what I'm looking at here. Uh, on your other slide, I think that's slide two you have listed there. Just I couldn't see it as clearly as I'd like you. Can you switch to slide two for me?
Yeah, Chris, can you open that up? Page two?
This, these are, I have three slides. This is the third slide. This is the second slide.
Oh, the, okay, so I'm looking at the one that has the yellow and the red square, just because it was small. I just wanted to be clear. The red portion on that second slide, as it shows for me, that is the commercial space of it and the larger yellow or golden rod, I guess you'd call it, part back there that would actually be the, the apartment feature, correct?
Roughly, yeah.
Roughly, yeah. So the, okay, that's all I really wanted clarification. Thank you.
Um, I have one, uh, one other question. Uh, the fact that we're, uh, that we're considering the approval of the two separate, uh, parcels, that doesn't affect our previous, um, conditional use permit that, uh, required that, uh, that both the housing and the commercial be completed, um, before either one could get, um, occupancy, correct?
Correct. It does not.
Okay.
Just to clarify, I think you said conditional use permit to, um, Commissioner Ortiz?
I believe so.
You meant entitlement.
Um, it was, sorry, it was, uh, yeah, it was, uh, the time we approved, uh, let's see, it was during the design review, I believe it was.
Okay, just wanted to clarify because this project did not have a C P. So it's just, yeah, design review or density bonus. Okay.
Okay, thank you. There's no further questions?
I have a question. Um, I was just trying to figure out why is it being proposed as two separate lots and not just one lot? There's a reason for that.
I mean, uh, maybe the applicant can speak to that question.
Would we take that comment now or do we have to wait until we ask questions of the, uh, of the applicant? I guess that would be for Melissa. Procedure-wise, do we, do we have them?
Procedure-wise, we can wait until he's, um, he, he presents and speaks, and he can answer that question. Uh, we're almost there, actually.
Then, um, so that, that question can wait. Um, and then I noticed that there's two different zoning design, uh, designations for these lots. Uh, portion, uh, two lots are zoned R four, and then the rest is the, uh, C three with the mixed-use overlay. Uh, would we need to do a zone change and a general plan update for these? Uh, the general plan shows that it's, uh, zone commercial, general commercial.
Right, so the, the, the area that he's proposing for the development is R four and it's C three mixed-use overlay. C three mixed-use overlay and R four allow for the same density and residential development. And so it, it doesn't affect the zoning. It's not in conflict, um, or anything like that. They're both the same density. They both have the same, uh, uh, proposals based on what he, what he's proposing.
But how far, well, the map, because the map will be different. Um, the area that they have proposed for the residential on Lot One is larger than the R four, uh, zoning.
The C three mixed-use allows residential at the R four density.
So then that Lot One will have two different zoning designations?
That he, uh, that it affected this, that it get the same result. He's proposing a mixed-use development at, at thirty units to the acre. And so that's what's being approved on the site. So the site as a whole is going to have the, uh, C three overlay at the front towards Rosecrans, and towards the rear is the R four where the bulk of the residential property is. Um, when this project was proposed, um, the city talked about it at, uh, several iterations of, like, a update of the zoning and things like that, something to change it. And that's something that we were going to do, but then we talked about as far as can he actually have this development how the current zoning exists. And we determined that he could back in two thousand sixteen, and that's why it was approved at that time.
Um, I feel like it'd be, you know, probably best to do the, the zone change because it looks like the, the parcels would be, you know, completely different as far as Lot One. Lot One would be R four, and then also a portion of it would be that mixed-use. And then also the general plan shows that they're general commercial for the, pretty much entire site.
Is that, uh, is, sorry, the chair, is this common that it, uh, we see this in other locations? Or is it just for this area where we're, where there's a designation of one zone, but, uh, because what they're proposing, is essentially similar, or you're allowed the same thing, um, we're not changing the zone?
Chris, I have a question. Um, the mixed-use overlay, do you have a map that shows where the mixed-use overlay? What area it covers?
Yeah, I can pull up a map. Yeah, I'll, I'll pull up a map. And then I'll share my screen.
Also, while, while we're waiting for that, um, just another question, um, that came up. Because we're considering it, uh, for approval for two different parcels, does this mean that he can, that, that the applicant, the owner, can eventually sell, um, the, the commercial lot separately from the residential? Or vice versa?
Yeah, yes.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, yeah, that's, that doesn't make sense.
We've done this prior because the code requires that it's a mixed-use development. So, for example, the first mixed-use that we approved was on Rosecrans and Yukon that had the McDonald's, and they have the hundred twenty-five units behind it. The McDonald's is part of the mixed-use development, but McDonald's is owned separately by McDonald's.
Okay, well, then to follow up on that, on that question with Commissioner Caraveo is asking about this potential zone change. Since we've mentioned that the business or the commercial parcel can be sold independently of the apartment parcel, does that mean in the future, um, that commercial property could be then developed into more housing units? Is that, is that a possibility, a future possibility that we could add in that space without having? Basically, I'm asking, is the commercial unit required to be attached to this parcel? And if not, if it's sold, can we then make, can they then make it into apartments later?
This was approved as a horizontal mixed-use development, so, um, the commercial component becoming housing is, is not possible because the commercial component is calculated at a certain amount that's attributed to the housing. So the, the commercial component is as much commercial as is needed for this particular development.
Okay, so without, so what you're saying is without the commercial, the commercial part there, this development can't, it, it can't stand?
Correct.
Okay, so even if it's sold on its own, it, that's still re-
It has to remain commercial.
Got it, okay.
Well, can't they in the future apply for, uh, I don't know, do some sort of conditional use permit or something? I mean, it seems, it seems really strange that, that one is needed by the other for, for the, for the development, but then you could sell them separately. Uh, that just seems really odd to me.
This entire area is covered by the entitlement that was approved by the, um, the design review and the density bonus housing agreement. Um, even the commercial is part of the contractual obligation by this owner, and even future owners are contractually obligated to produce the development that's approved by the commission tonight and in previous meetings.
And if I could add, uh, this project originally was approved in two thousand sixteen as a condo project, and the configuration is exactly the same. The condo was on a separate parcel, the yellow, and the commercial was on the red. So this parcel map mimics what was approved by the commission in, um, as part of the condo, the track map in two thousand sixteen. So that hasn't changed.
And I have my, um, map of, I'm just zooming in on the area before I share my screen, so bear with me just for a moment.
Yeah, yeah, the big difference, though, is, is that originally it was owner occupied condominiums, and now it's, uh, apartments. Um, so, you know, it's, I think it's, it's significantly different.
Apartments are- Um, and, and, uh, once we get to, I do have a question for the applicant. If, um, if they're willing to go back to the condos, um, instead of the apartments?
Can, can everyone see my screen?
We got it.
Okay. So I'm going to use my mouse to show everyone, uh, where we are. Okay. So, uh, in the center of the screen where my mouse is, can people see my mouse moving?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so this, these two parcels here are the commercial parcels. These two here, and then this here, this here, and this particular parcel here, these are the residential parcels. So the development that's being proposed as a whole is consistent with the development standard of, uh, every parcel that has residential development on it. But at the same time, it's a, it's a use, and the, the parcel map is tying together all of these uses as one, it's just two lots. So the lot is going to have a commercial lot on the front, and right behind the commercial lot, they're going to have a shared lot, uh, because one side's going to have parking, one side's going to have a driveway for the entrance of the residential. So there's going to be some shared agreements in the lot, just like any other condominium or parcel lot that the commission has deemed. It's just that the front lot is designated for commercial, and the rear lot is going to be designated for residential.
And if I could add, the uses are consistent with the zoning designation. The mixed-use allows for both commercial and residential, but the R four, it only allows for residential. So the portion of the project that's, uh, it's apartments is on the R four and the mixed-use portion. So no commercial portion is on the R four area. So the project is consistent with zoning. There's no need for zoning change, zone change, or general plan amendment.
Okay, understood.
Thank you, Chris. That, that, that helps.
Thank you. My clarification. Is the applicant present and do they wish to speak?
I'm sorry, the applicant is, is present. And I get, yeah.
Uh, this is Amy Shepherd. We'd just like to say thank you for your consideration tonight, and if you have questions, we're available to answer them.
Yeah, and this is William Hatzan as well. I'm the developer and willing to, ready to answer any question.
Okay, thank you. So is there anyone else who wishes to address the commission on this issue?
Well, I'm, I'm fine. Before we move on, there, there was a question for the applicant. I, I, could you repeat that question? I think it was from Commissioner, um, Caraveo. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, my question was, um, is there a reason for, to have two separate lots and not just one, uh, combined lot?
Um, we wanted to have a separate lots to create a buffer zone between the, um, the commercial and the residential. Uh, and if, if, uh, a few weeks ago, you, we've submitted the, uh, plan review and, 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 uh, maybe, uh, Chris can show that picture where we had flipped the parking lot to the back so to create that buffer zone between the two commercial and the, and the residential, um, area. Um, I don't think there was any other reason, um, that I can remember. It's been so long. But, um, you know, this is something that happened five years ago, and we just have to visit him right now, so.
Uh, okay, yeah, because you can provide the buffer zone with just the one lot. I was just trying to see if you were trying to sell it separately in the future or, um, what the intentions were for creating two lots?
I, that wasn't the intent, but when it comes to banks, and it's a, since it's a two-phase project, the banks would like to finance the commercial separate than the residential and not one whole. And, um, that's, that's the way it was, it was set up in the beginning. So, and we intend to do residential first and then the commercial.
Okay, um, and then I just wanted to, um, see if there was any possibility of you could maybe convert it back to condos. Um, I noticed from a previous meeting that, uh, Commissioner, uh, Richard had mentioned that, you know, we're really looking for homeownership, and I've looked at a lot of the city council meetings and also look at, took a look at our, um, housing element. I found, um, a couple of policies that the city goes by as far as homeownership. Uh, specifically, the housing element goes in policies, section two, uh, regarding provision of variety of housing types. Policy two point two, uh, it states that provide incentives for new construction for affordable housing. Encourage provisions of units with three or more bedrooms, provide adequate-sized housing for large families. And then also policy two point five, support development of affordable ownership housing for first-time home buyers. And then policy two point six, promote homeownership to increase neighborhood stability and provide increased housing choice. And then also policy two point seven, emphasize ownership, housing as a preferred tenure form of new housing to achieve tenure distribution that is consistent with the national or regional trends. So I'm just trying to see, you know, based on our, our housing element and, you know, as a benefit to the city and its community, if you were willing to, um, you know, provide the condos instead of the apartments?
Yeah, that was intense.
I think Commissioner, I, I can handle this one. I think Commissioner Caraveo, um, that the intent of the developer was to just retain the, the right to do either for sale or for rent. But the city and the state, this is, we were informed that you guys could not accommodate a hybrid project that would allow for a decision later on, um, or that would allow for, for both homeownership and rentals. Um, so unfortunately, because of the environment of the housing market in Hawthorne for new construction as compared to other cities like Lomita and Gardena, which I would think are similar demographic and geographically close, um, the developers, you know, it, they would be taking, uh, their, this project would not be viable if it was strictly, um, for sale because we just can't touch those prices in Hawthorne. And I would point to the, the project at Yukon, um, that, that this applicant's, you know, uh, relative did that was, is freestanding homes and still had the same issue of appraisals. Um, so I, I think if the city were open to working with us further in trying to create, like, a hybrid project where the developer could, you know, have some reassurance that this, this project would balance out financially um, and also, you know, be an active participant in homeownership, um, then that's something that, you know, we would definitely, uh, you know, consider. But I don't think that the city is offering that right now. Um, so I think you guys are sort of forcing the developer to make a choice between for sale and for rent and just considering the current environment with COVID and with the appraisal issue, um, and the schools and the trash in the area. Um, it's just going to be too hard for him to sell those at a market rate. Now, this project, if you remember, when we changed it from condos, uh, for sale, we had twenty-five affordable units, and I explained to you guys at that point. Affordable rate for sale. So by converting it to, to rentals, we're able to drop down from the affordable rate here to the very low income tier and actually help the families in Hawthorne that, that need, um, you know, financial assistance to pay rent. And in this COVID pandemic, it's essential, um, and, and because we're going to be offering these at the very low income rate, and because we're going to be offering these to, you know, Section Eight and third-party voucher recipients, um, they do have the, the money to save for when the city decides to implement these homeownership programs, which we haven't seen in, you know, five or ten years. Um, so when those funds are available with down payment assistance and things like that, um, then certainly this would be, you know, a, a great opportunity for a hybrid project to, for us to get some of those families into homeownership. But right now, the city's not set up for that, even though it's in their housing element. And it would be important that we get the right legislators on the council to ensure that we do have these funds because I hear a lot of people saying it, but it's, there's, it's not actually viable. The people who are earning, you know, twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars a year would not be able to afford these condos. So it would end up being face, you know, entry-level kids with bachelor's degrees making a hundred, two hundred K a year that would be buying them. And I don't think that does a service to the city of Hawthorne or the recipients, um, the residents of Monetta Gardens at all. This would not be a project for them. It would be a gentrification project if we went back to the condos for sale, and it would not be viable for the developer. So for these reasons, you know, um, we have to decline at this point, and we would love to come back to, to the city and sit down and consider something that was maybe both for sale and for rent. Um, because I think that would be beneficial and would actually be more pleasing to the, uh, the housing element, which requires all types of housing, not just housing for sale.
Uh, thank you, Amy. Yes, I agree with you on that. Um, and hopefully we can get something, you know, with you guys and the city to, um, that way it'll benefit, you know, the developer and the community. Um, uh, I'm not sure if, maybe Melissa or, is, is there somebody, you know, from the city that can coordinate with them on, um, coming up with that type of agreement?
Um, do you want, in terms of an agreement, we, we already have an agreement with, um, the developer for this project, and Ms. Shepherd was correct. Our hands are tied, um, in terms of state law. Um, this is, this was a, um, a, a density bonus project, and so we were subject to density bonus law. So in terms of this project, um, we don't have a lot of flexibility. We didn't have a lot of flexibility. Um, but we're, we're happy to speak to developer, the representative, about other projects or other programs that can be implemented. Um, we're happy to do that, and so that, that would be my comment there. Um, Art, did you want to add anything?
No, at this, the hybrid method, um, I'm not familiar with it, but I'd be more than happy to, um, contact the applicant and find- contact the applicant and find out what exactly they were talking about because there's future projects. There's always, um, also the opportunity down the road for conversion. Um, our apartments could be converted to condos. So there is that situation where the marketplace could be, uh, could, could be a different situation where it could benefit. So, but I'd be more than happy to sit down with them and find out exactly what they were contemplating and see if there's any, any opportunities in the future.
Right. Um, to go off of, oh, sorry, I didn't, Justin, I don't want to step on you if you still have. Mr. Caraveo, I don't want to step on your toes if you still have questions.
Oh, um, maybe, um, so, yeah, I would like to, you know, explore the hybrid option, at least for this project because, you know, we're not sure when the next project will come about. Um, and may, maybe if, you know, providing for maybe additional, um, housing units, if that would, um, you know, maybe even benefit the developer to, you know, allow for more, um, homeownership, uh, making more beneficial, you know, for the developer and the community. Um, if we can explore these options, um, as well.
Excellent. I think the developer would be interested in opening up a conversation and I'd be happy to show you guys what a, a hybrid project looks like.
Uh, yeah, but, uh, Amy, uh, we're, we're talking about this product, future projects, yes, we, you know, of course, we'll, we'll, we'll explore. But for this project, we're looking for the votes. We're looking, we're going to be looking for a vote.
I'm confused.
Yeah, well, the density bonus agreement for this one has already been signed and approved. So what we're looking for is the parcel map tonight. But I'd be happy to show you guys what a hybrid project looks like for future developments. I, I think that was my understanding that there's other parcels in the city that could benefit.
Correct.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Richards.
Oh, I, I just have to, a question just based off of with, um, the applicant. First off, thank you all for being here to talk about this. So, um, Ms. Shepherd, you have mentioned you would be interested if, uh, in having this conversation about a potential, um, hybrid, hybrid, uh, agreement at the, uh, at the site. So really the question I wanted to ask to Art and Melissa was, who, was it, would that just be the council? Who they would talk to about potentially adding that to this project that they could turn that later? I understand that the agreement has already been made and, and according to laws that we can't actually change anything. I would assume the only way that's possible is if that was, uh, agreed upon by the applicant, if they were allowed to do something like that. Am I correct in that understanding?
Um, it's, I'm sorry, it's a state law. Yeah, it's a state law that's tying our hands, Mr. Caraveo. It's, it's not, you know, it, the, the city is complying with state law. So there's nothing we could do for this project. It's something that we would have to focus on, you know, as a unified body for future projects. Um, but for this project, the developer's already been waiting several months to start construction on a project that was approved, you know, five or six years ago. Trying to, you know, change state legislation to allow for, for this project to be converted under the laws, you know, that we've, we've had it passed under would be too time-consuming and, you know, would really inhibit the, you know, uh, profitab- profitability of this project. And I don't think the city wants to be in that position where they're, you know, incurring inverse condemnation.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and Ms. Shepherd, just to clarify, the project was not approved five or six years ago in the shape that it is now. It's a completely different project now that it's become a, a for rental project as opposed to a for sale project. Just the clarification on that.
Well, I don't think it's an entirely, uh, there's nothing architecturally, uh, that's changed at all. It's the exact same footprint. So that's what we're asking for tonight is the parcel map to be approved on the original. You guys already went through the design review and we've already been through the density bonus. So this is actually our third meeting. In most cities, these meetings are combined into one. Um, but I'm happy to be here and, and discuss different models with you. Um, but I think at this point, you know, we shouldn't impact this developer any longer.
Understood.
Trying to change state law.
Yeah, just echoing what, uh, Commissioner Ortiz was saying, yeah, the reason we're having this conversation is because, like you said, yes, this is a very different project because, you know, while the footprint may remain the same, while the entire entirety, the look of the project may remain the same. The simple fact of the matter is we initially approved it as a condominium project, then we changed it to an apartment project. So, yeah, we're having a little bit longer, more depth conversation about it, but that's just basically all that's, all that's happening here. It's just trying to understand, um, what else, what other elements went into it? Because I believe I did ask the question at the last meeting was, uh, was there any reason other than, or, or what particularly was the reason why it was changed to, from a condominium to apartment? And the answer was primarily because it wasn't profitable. That was, that was the answer. That's why we're having a conversation. So we got a new answer today. I, I greatly appreciate it, but that's why we're continuing the conversations. Because again.
Yeah, well.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, we just want to make sure that all of our development projects are profitable. That's why people come, you know, to invest their, their money in the city. Um, you know, but there's also habitability and, and equitability in housing that needs to be considered. So I think right now, with everybody going through pandemic, you know, the, the housing market's just on fire, you guys. Uh, you know, it's going fifty, sixty thousand above list price. So, you know, if we change this back to a condo, this is gentrification. And if that's what we want to do as a city, that's fine. But I don't think that that's what the developer and I are hearing out there is that we, we're hearing we want equitable housing, which includes low-income housing. So that's what we're presenting today.
Okay. So if there's, there's, uh, no one else who wants to address the commission on this, we'll move on. Mr. Basmat, Basmaskin, I'm sorry, are there any documents to place into the administrative record such as late communications?
Um, we haven't had late communication and I will confer that with, uh, Chris Palmer if there has been anything that he received that I'm not aware of, but I believe we haven't.
I have not received anything. Thank you.
Okay. Do any of my fellow commissioners have any final comments on this item or questions for staff?
Uh, I asked you to do, Mr. Smith. I just have a question for Melissa. I mean, my understanding is that the project that's in front of us today is the approval of the combination of the four parcels into two. And my question to you is how does, does discussing whether it's hybrid or not hybrid affect what's in front of us right now?
Well, um, you, you have a right to inquire about the project. You're asking some questions about the project. And I, I think that the discussion was kind of aimed at, I mean, the fact that they, it's two separate parcels. There's a commercial component and a residential component. Um, you know, asking questions about why that was done that way. Um, and a little bit further about what the residential is going to look like. Um, you know, it's, it's related to the action. Um, but you're right, the, the act, the actual vote that you're taking today is a, it's a map. You're approving a map. Um, and actually, this project had a map prior. Um, there was also a map that divided, um, for sale, to create for sale projects. I don't know if you remember, but there was also a map attached to that original, um, entitlement, that, that, the original, the, the project as originally proposed. Um, so this is a, basically, um, the same thing, but it's being consolidated and created, creating two, two lots instead of the hundred lots that were going to be sold before. So long way of answering your question is that, you're right, that's a specific action that you're taking. And I think some of these questions were kind of aimed at understanding the project and understanding why the configuration is the way that it is.
And if I could, if I could add, uh, unlike a typical, uh, subdivision, you're actually dividing pr- parcels into smaller. In this case, it's more of like a lot line adjustment. You're actually consolidating. Um, and the, we're processing through, through the parcel map procedure and there are required findings. And, um, the findings are in the draft resolution. And the issues that you could raise are really related to those findings. And pretty much they're all related to the lot. Does the lot, uh, meet the minimum requirements of lot size and so on. So there's limited, uh, opportunity here with regards to this, what's before you at the moment, um, with regards to the lots portion.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, if there's nothing else, I'm now formally close a public hearing on this item. Call on my fellow commissioners for a vote on the item. Do I have a motion?
Um, I, I would like to motion to deny, it doesn't, um, meet the zoning code as far as the zoning designation in the general plan, uh, designation. I think those need to be updated if we're going to approve something like this.
Is there a second?
Melissa, you look again.
I'll clarify the motion, just, um, because what we have before you is approval. So we have a resolution of approval. If, if what you're making a motion to do is to deny the project, your motion would actually be to direct staff to come back with a resolution of denial, um, for this project. That, that would actually be the motion, just to clarify what it would be. Because what, what you have before you is resolutions of approval. So, um, I guess we could see if there's a second. Just procedurally, that's how it would work. If there's a second, then you vote on that and it would be a direction for staff to come back. If there is no second, then someone would make a motion to approve the resolution and then we'd go forward that way. But just procedurally, that's how it would look. So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And Melissa, just to follow up, um, sorry, just to follow up on that. Um, so staff would come back with, with a motion to, um, deny the, uh, what's before us today. Staff would come back to us with the resolution for denial and, um, uh, the legal reasoning for the denial or, or?
So, right. All, all decisions of the planning commission, um, related to entitlements have to be in the form of a written resolution. So there's no denying of a project without having the resolution. So you would have to direct us, um, actually, to be more specific, you would direct us to research, um, this matter and to prepare a resolution of denial, um, if, if possible. Um, and we'd have to, I, I can't say one way or the other. I'd have to look into, um, the process for doing that. Um, but that's what would need to happen. You would have to direct us to come back.
Okay, and just further clarification, in directing you to come back with that resolution, is that, uh, like you're looking if, looking to see if we can actually do that legally or are we looking to see?
I mean, that's part of it and we also have to, I mean, there are findings as, um, uh, Mr. Mr. Basmatkin noted. There are findings that we have to be, that we have to make and our, our staff report did make those findings. Um, that, that's based on the information that we had. We'd have to look at additional information, go back to those findings and, and, um, determine whether they were, you know, appropriate. Um, it's, there are, there's some information that you've provided to us. Um, we'd have to go back and research further to see if, um, there's an issue with a finding. But, um, right, what, what, what we have to, what we presented is a resolution that has, that makes these findings for approval. Um, so that, that's about as informa- as much information as I can give you right now without really researching this further and taking a look at this type of action and what we can and cannot do. Um, but that's why your motion would be to have us research and then if appropriate, come back with a resolution of denial. That's, that's, that's what I would, um, ask that the motion be.
Yeah, so pretty much we would have another meeting with a new staff report, a new resolution, uh, with the proposal for the, the, the denial, uh, based on, uh, the certain findings. Um, and I was, um, you know, recommending, you know, because this doesn't meet the, the zoning, uh, code designation in general plan, um, you know, as part of, you know, the findings for that.
Right. You've provided some information. All the commissioners have provided some information that we would, you know, take into consideration. And, and we go back and review and, and do whatever is appropriate.
Good. Okay.
So I just clarified the motion and I think there's, we're waiting for a second.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Most of the, and there's a second. So, uh, will the secretary please call for the vote?
Chairperson, Chairperson Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson, Austin Nable.
Olafstein.
Uh, Commissioner Ortiz?
Um, I'll, uh, support the motion and say, um, no.
I'm sorry, support the motion. Uh, let me clarify that. You're supporting the motion, so you're voting yes? Yes, so that we, um, because the motion is to direct staff to further and prepare documentation, if appropriate, to, um, to deny the approval.
Yes, I am.
A little confusing, I'm sorry, but I thi- I think what you meant to say was.
I'm, I'm supporting that motion, correct, yeah.
Supporting the motion, okay. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner, um, Caraveo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Richard?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes for.
The motion is for, I'm sorry, go ahead, Art.
Yeah, so the motion is to return at the next meeting with a resolution denying, um, this lot split uh, based on the findings that it's not consistent with the general plan and zoning.
Okay. And it's four zero, four, um, eyes and one.
Four eyes and one of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if it, if it comes back that it's, uh, it's perfectly legal, then, um, I wouldn't have a problem, uh, moving forward with it, so.
That's why I abstained. I don't have enough information to say no. I don't have enough information in front of me right now to make that decision.
Right. So I would just add to the, to, uh, what, what Art just said as the motion. It's also, um, if appropriate, depending on the research that's conducted by staff. So I think we understand the motion.
Yep, staff will make a recommendation with regards to that motion, but at the end of the day, it's your vote.
Right, right.
So if I may, Melissa, if the motion, the next motion comes for denial and that wasn't approved, does that automatically mean approval if there wasn't enough evidence to support the denial? Or there would have to be another resolution again for approval?
There would have to be another resolution for approval. Yeah, okay, I understand.
And, and you can't do, we, you can't have, I guess like a, it would be like a backup resolution the same way, just so that we don't prolong this any longer than necessary.
The, the, you will, you, you, the, you will have an opportunity if you decide if that, the motion fails and you want to, uh, approve the parcel map, you could do that. So you would have to following those opportunities so you could decide one or the other.
The same.
Right.
Same, same evening, yes.
Okay, so we, we, we wouldn't need the direct staff to have like a backup.
No, because we already have that resolution. It's.
We already have.
Moment, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't call it a backup, but I, I understand what you're saying. You want to be able to have some flexib-. Not a problem to call it that, but I, I just would say that it, you know, I understand that you want to be able to have that flexibility. So we can try to prepare something that will make sure to expedite this so that we don't have to come back. And, and it is already prepared. We already do have some information prepared, so, uh, the documentation prepared. So we'll, we'll figure out the best way to do this for you guys that's appropriate and makes sense, okay?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Okay, well now recess the planning commission, call back to order the airport zoning commission. Airport zoning commission consent calendar, there are no items. Airport zoning commission new continued public hearings, there are no items. Will now call back to order the planning commission concurrently with the airport zoning commission. Non-public hearing items, there are no items. Administrative items, there are no items. Commissioners reports, discussion of small lot subdivisions and small, slight, tiny homeownership opportunities. This was something that Commissioner Ortiz had requested before.
Uh-oh.
You can't hear?
Did we lose, we lost, um, Commissioner's voice, audio? I think he was indicating that he lost audio and he may be calling back.
Oh, is that?
That's what I think is happening. So Cable, if you have a call from a commissioner or from a number, let me see.
That, that's me, Melissa. Thank you.
Is that you? Two one three?
Yes.
That was you?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, my, uh, battery ran out on my head headset. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
So we were just introducing your item, um, Commissioner Ortiz. So we were just introducing your item, Commissioner Ortiz.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Why do we?
So we have this as a Commissioner report, Commissioner Ortiz, did you want to talk to us about that and give us the information that you were thinking with regard to this? We put this item exactly as you requested.
Yes, okay, thank you, yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, part of the discussion that we have today on, on, on the, the project before us kinda plays into, into this, this topic also, you know, ways, trying to, trying to figure out ways that we can encourage homeownership. What I had mentioned before, when I first proposed for this topic to be on the agenda was, was small lot ordinances, much smaller than what, what is typically considered. You know, obviously the smaller the lot, the more affordable it becomes. So keeping that in mind, you know, and maybe looking into the requirement of allowing very small residences on, on these smaller lots. But also one other option that came up today was some sort of hybrid programs where there could be incentives to developers to develop those hybrid programs where there's a, you know, there's a minimal risk for them because, because they're including rental and for sale units on, on the housing project. It could be just a housing project or a mixed use project, but things like that. And I'm really open to other ideas that, that staff or my fellow commissioners could, could think of and discuss for, for encouraging homeownership. And I think the only way to encourage homeownership is really to make it affordable enough for, for, for a wider spectrum of residents to be able to afford homeownership. And of course, make it enough of an incentive for developers to develop that type of development. So it has to be a benefit first to develop, to the developer that will trickle down to the, to the homeowner. That's, that's about it. What I would be looking for is maybe a discussion on, from staff, on what are current, what are current minimums that we have for, for subdivisions? Is there, I'm assuming there's a certain square footage for, for both the, the lot size and the residence that can be, or the buildable square footage.
Okay.
If I may, Melissa, as, as wonderful as the idea is, in addition to what Commissioner Ortiz asked for, can we actually have a study on the actual need of such housing? Like, do we actually need housing? Is the size of the house or the lot, is that what's preventing residents from homeownership? Like, do they want something cheaper, are they looking for something outside of Hawthorne? So if there's any study that can be done before we go ahead and actually find the legality of how small we can have it, is there a need for it? I, I don't know if my question is.
Yeah, no, that's a really good question, I think, Art, you're probably gonna talk about the studies that are coming up soon for us.
Actually, what I was gonna mention is that the city's gonna embark on adopting the housing element as required by state law. And the housing element is a very broad document, addresses many issues. And this could be an opportunity where we could, with our consultants, have an opportunity to focus on that particular item also. And the idea is to, again, promote homeownership, is we already have those objectives and goals in the housing element. And to see what other opportunities we have with regards to any other changes to our code, the subdivision ordinance, the small lot subdivision ordinance, for example. So it could be an opportunity to do that during the housing element update process.
And that is gonna happen soon, right, Art? We're looking at that within the next couple of months, we'll be starting the study.
And yes, we have to have a new housing element adopted by, in a, in a, in a year, it's just less than a year.
One year, October of 2021?
Yes.
Yeah.
So actually by December, we'll be going to the city council to contract with a consulting firm or firms to work on the housing element. They also have to work on our safety element and environmental justice element. And again, these are required by state. And so again, it's an opportunity that we could look at these issues during the process. And the housing element is a very robust process where it requires public participation, outreach to various members of the community. So I think it's, it's a great opportunity to, to focus on this particular matter at that time.
And is there any word on what the results of the census would come back to see the population, the median income, the?
Good question, I'm, I'm not sure when the census information starts coming, coming out. How long it takes for the census to gather all that information and start to publish it.
I think they're almost done, yeah, I think they're almost done with the collecting, they've started a while ago and I think they're, I think they're gonna be done mid-November maybe. But I'm just wondering, because that's gonna also play a huge role, you know, understanding the median income, the demographic, you know, the, that would also help us decide if, if there's a need for that or any other thing. And, and I do agree, it's a great idea, but I don't want us to embark on something where we may later on discover that there wasn't a need for it.
And then we also. I agree, it's, 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 it would be really good to, to couple all the upcoming studies with this topic. But one of the reasons why I brought it up was because, you know, everybody in the city keeps on mentioning, also the city council keeps on mentioning, we want more homeownership, right, as opposed to rental. And also wanna, you know, the, the, the market tells us that, that there's a big need for, for affordable housing, whether it be rental or, or, or ownership. And obviously the city prefers ownership, everybody prefers ownership. So one of the reasons why the market tells us that is because of the skyrocket, rocketing prices for, for rental right now and as well for housing, for ownership. So there's a lot of people that are looking for, like, young professionals that are looking to buy their first home. And, you know, they can't even afford Hawthorne because of the starting prices of homes. So they're either relegated to rental in Hawthorne, which is, is not as desirable. And, and that alone, if two professionals could barely afford to buy a house here in Hawthorne, that tells you a lot about, you know, all the other hundreds of thousands of, of, of blue collar workers, you know, that, that, that is clearly beyond their, their capacity. So as a city where we're trying to be inclusive of every level of income and we want, I think we, we want as a community more, we want the, both the blue collar and white collar workers to be able to live in the city where they work. So that's part of the background of why I wanted to talk a little bit further about this.
Yes, right.
So just to, just to kind of bring it together and clarify, what, what you're, what you want us to do potentially is, you had some ideas here, the small homes owner, as a homeownership opportunity, but really you, the, I hear that you're directing staff to look at affordable homeownership opportunities in the city, whether that involves doing some studies or looking at some changes to our zoning code or, or looking even outside the box for something totally different. That's what I sound, it sounds like you want us to do, you're directing us to put some research together and bring it back to you all related to methods of getting affordable homeownership in the city.
Yes, Melissa, thank you.
Including but not limited to what you mentioned.
Yes, correct, and, and I thought that was the original, you know, that, at least that was my intent, that staff would come back with research already, so I apologize for not making that clear.
We didn't quite understand it that way. We thought it was something that you wanted to talk about, that you wanted to present as a report on your part, but that's fine, so. But we understand that you're, you, you know, your direction, you want us to look into, like I said, affordable homeownership opportunities in the city. And we'll look at it from a planning perspective and see what we can do in our zoning code or in terms of studies. We do have some things that we could talk about, definitely.
Yeah, for sure, and, and I'll do some research on my own and, you know, possibly cities or innovative ideas that other cities are, are, are doing for, for increasing ownership, so, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. Art, did you have anything to add?
No, that's, that's clear, I understand the, the direction.
Got it.
And, and we just wanna be cautious, 'cause as we're trying to solve one problem, we also might be creating additional problems as far as high density and then also the parking issue in Hawthorne. And then as the state code allows it now is that we can provide ADUs on pretty much any lot. So, you know, these small lots could potentially have, you know, two to three units on it. And we're, we're, you know, creating more density that way by providing for, you know, owners to create these smaller lots. Now, 'cause as it is now, a single house, they can have an ADU and then a JADU. So if we're creating, you know, even smaller lots from those lots that we already have, you know, that, that's, you know, additional units, more cars, things like that. And then also as far as providing for additional utility services, things like that, that the city would have to accommodate.
Okay, we will, we will take this, um, take this direction and provide some, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead, we'll provide some direction, it may, I was gonna say, it may take us a few meetings, it may not be at the next meeting that we bring this back to you. We're probably not gonna be able to do that, but we'll, we will put this as a project for our department.
Yeah, we, we don't have the staffing to be able to do this right away, this is, this will take some time.
No, and, and I, I completely understand that, you know, anytime that we provide additional work for, for staff, you know, I'm very conscious that it's not gonna happen, you know, for the next meeting. So I was a little surprised that, that you guys are coming back so quick, but, yeah, that, that's the idea. And, and Mr. Caravell's point is well taken, I think that is definitely something we have to consider. Just also to mention, you know, the, the population in the, in the state and actually every state in, in, in the US is, is growing. We're not, we're not decreasing in population, so I think it'd be wiser for us to, to, to take that into account and, and, and plan for, for, for a more controlled increase in, in density in, in all our cities, you know, especially related to the increase in density, density for, for homeownership, so.
Okay, we will take in the direction, we'll look into that, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Is there anything else the commissioners would like to report on? If there isn't?
I, I just really quickly, I just wanna say something, Mr. Smith, I, I just wanna say that, I know it's quirky, but anyway, I'm really proud of our team, like, I'm really proud of our team because, I mean, even we have, I'm sorry, even when we have disagreements, I, I love that we're always very respectful to each other and I love that we work as a team, not everyone sees everything the same. And of course, we are going to disagree sometimes, but I, I love the level of respect that we have for each other and the level of professionalism that we deal with each other, I, I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you, it's very true, very true. Okay, if there is, if there is Benny from further from.
I have two things, is there an update on the Rena numbers appeal?
No, there's no, there's no update in terms of filing an appeal at this time.
And then is that something that we would have to ask or present to the council? Or how does the appeal process work?
Well, the council could definitely direct the city manager to consider appealing.
Okay, so, so they don't need like a formal hearing to do it, they could just direct the city manager and then, and then have staff prepare the appeal?
Then if we get directed, then we would work on it.
Okay, and then I was just trying to see if we could start receiving the public notices for the planning commission meetings. That way we can kind of be aware of, you know, the, the items that's gonna be on the agenda in, in advance.
You're talking about the public hearing notices?
Yes, mhm.
When a note put out to the public, you wanna be able to receive those also, is that?
Yeah, it can be digital, it doesn't have to be an actual mail notice, yeah.
Second time.
And that's, and I, I agree with Rula on, on, you know, we've been doing a great job working together. A lot of us have different opinions and, you know, that, that's the good part about it and, and that's what we, you know, need on this commission as well.
Absolutely. Just to say, before we leave, this is just for the space for commissioner reports at this point right now, right? Yeah? Okay, cool, I just wanted to say, again, thank you to everyone for being here. Your sentiments, Rula, really appreciate the fact that everyone here, you know, deals with each other rather professionally, it's, it's important. Appreciate it. I wanted to make this report a little bit, not so much to my fellow commissioners, but to any, anyone who's out here watching what's going on here at home, to give you this kind of pointer. If you look at some of the things that we talked about, we discussed here, if you notice some of these decisions we are making that we can't, are, are set for us at the state level. There, there are things that we do that are mandated for us at the state level. And right now you have a really poignant opportunity, if you don't see what you like to see here, you can do that by coming out and exercising your right to vote, this is something that we do, that's how you figure out and impact these things. It's important for you to understand, we do the best that we can here in this body to work with the laws that we have. On the way to impact those, long beyond us, become lots from the history of where this body even came from. And it's important for us to understand how we work here together. And with that, I would again like to appreciate everyone here for navigating that minutia, because it gets hard, it, it gets difficult to really under, sometimes even just to understand what all we are, we have the agency to do. And appreciate you all for navigating that and taking this as seriously as you do. And, yeah, with that, I would be remiss if as a county employee I didn't say, please go out and vote. Vote centers open soon, you gotta do that, we have numerous vote centers here in Hawthorne, please take advantage of them. Vote by mail if you can, stay home, be safe, and, yeah, that's it for me.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Good reminder.
There's nothing else, the meeting will be adjourned at seven eleven PM.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner.